How are you doing?
Yeah, I do, actually.
Good afternoon.
We're good here.
Hello, counselor.
Hello.
How are you?
Captain Patterson.
I was talking to, I was talking to Gaven Duke.
Oh, where are you? Is he the counselor well?
No.
He deserves the, any, any important titles he is in, he can have, he should get.
Well, he is the captain of the bocce ball is what he is.
Well, that's, it's a good thing.
There's a backstory he could tell you one day. All right, let's see. So I forgot Ron and Mal.
I'm here.
Okay. Still waiting on Jeanette. And.
Bunny.
Bunny.
And Ron Ferris.
Ron's on.
I'm on.
Ron's on.
Yes.
Bunny's here too.
I see Bunny.
Hey Bunny, how are you?
Hi.
Lights, camera, action.
We'll give Jeanette a minute or two. Gaven, did you get your computer worked out as far as Zoom? Are you able to communicate okay now?
I guess that answers it.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna ask everybody to mute themselves with the exception of the commission members and city attorney. And Mr. Chairman, if you would like to start.
All right, welcome everyone to the August Zoom platform meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission for Bellamy. Let's do a quick roll call for the record. Someone know who's here. Bunny Blackburn.
Here.
Gaven Duke. Gaven, you're muted.
I'll text Gaven and tell him that.
No, he's, he's not muted.
I couldn't hear him.
Gaven, your mic shows that it's open, but we cannot hear you.
You can hear us, Gaven. Sometimes I have to log out and log back in.
Or turn the volume up if you have it down.
And Ron Ferris, you're here.
Here.
All right. We are also joined by the city attorney Doug Barry, city manager Beth Reardon, city recorder Edie Glazer, and city manager, assistant manager, building official Lyle Patterson. So Lyle, do you, do you have opening comments?
No, just that the governor has extended the teleconferencing platform for us. That's really.
Okay. Well, has everyone had an opportunity to review the June minutes? Any questions, comments, changes?
I have no comments. Ron Ferris.
I had one that I sent to Edie earlier. Can we have a motion then for the approval of the minutes?
I made for the approval of the minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold on to your phone for the audio.
Does that happen?
I've seen people do that, yeah. Jason does it all the time.
Gaven, we can hear you now.
You can hear him now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, fantastic, okay.
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, just a few words about procedures for the, for today's meeting. Lyle will introduce each of the applications. The applicant or his representative can make a case to the board for why their request should be granted. Board will ask questions, discuss it, solicit comments from interested people in the audience, and then close the public portion of the debate. Continue discussions among ourselves and then call for a vote and an hopefully approvals. So that being said, there is no old business. No, I'm sorry, there is an old business. So Lyle?
Today, one thing of Doug. Doug, since we have four, is that gonna be a problem? Since we only have four on the commission?
We have a tie vote, it'll be a problem. It won't. You'll have to get three votes to win, to, to carry the, carry the item, but no, that's not a problem. That's, that's more than a quorum.
Okay. I just got a text back from Jeanette. She said she's having some Wi-Fi issues, so she may send them out in a second.
Okay. Okay. Should we wait or continue?
I think you ought to continue.
Okay.
I'll tell her.
The chair, up to the chair and the commission of course.
I'll ask her if she can join by phone.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
First item under new business, the application for certificate of appropriateness for Greg and Holly Gong, 429 Royal Oaks Drive to construct a new single-family home. Whoever is representing you are up and I will share my screen.
Hey Lyle, this is Preston Shea with P Shea Design, and I believe Greg is also out there in the, in the interwebs. He may or may not join in if we've got any questions for him.
All right, if you'll just call up whatever drawing you wish, I'll, I'll pull it up.
Yes, sir. I believe we can start with our drawings, the issue five revised design development drawings. I don't have the actual list of files, but there are our design development drawings, the landscape architect site plan, neighborhood context.
Is that what you want to start with, the neighborhood context?
That'd be fine, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, it's up.
All right. So the home we are presenting for Greg and Holly Gong is a two-story residence. It does have a rear-facing basement component that's not visible from the street in an Italianate style. The commission, may or may not recall this, was submitted as the Bass residence several months ago in a classical revival style. There've been some internal modifications and I think the biggest change has been just the paring down of the overall massing. We've gone from full utilization of two-story massing at all the ancillary wings to two-story primarily at the main mass. We've gone from a classical revival with gables to hip roof forms. The primary materials are painted brick at the main house and a mix of hardy and hardy artisan siding at the, the additive wings. And you can see our, the image for our house sort of third from the top on the left is the, the line drawing. And we'll get into working drawings later, but I think this struck a pretty good visual of how the home, we believe, does fit very well in context with the existing homes in the neighborhood, both in terms of massing and material. Don't seem to be a lot of truly historic homes in the surrounding area. There, there are some. I'm not certain what the, the date of the home in the upper left is, but kind of a mix of development dates and patterns. And then I think it was our goal and Greg and Holly's goal to design something that fit well with the neighborhood. I hope you agree we did that. Lyle, if you would maybe pull up the site plan. Yeah, we can use ours. We can jump back over to the landscape architect site plan for, for specific grading if we need. Generally speaking, I mentioned this started as the Bass residence several months ago. Generally speaking, the overall layout is pretty well the same. There's a kind of a strange cross slope to the lot that the Historic Zoning Commission gave a little feedback on. So there's a curved retaining wall front left there. It's south technically. And then the garage remained on the right-hand side of the house, which is the north side of the house. So those major components have, have pretty well stayed the same throughout the process. And then generally speaking, the elevations have, have become much more subdued or less imposing. Let's see, we've got, well, if you could open up the, the landscape architects site plan, we'll illustrate the grading. There it is. Yeah, so in the, as part of the previous submittal, Historic Zoning Commission had asked that we do add the retaining wall on, on the bottom of the screen, the south side, as a means to reduce the overhaul, overall foundation exposure at the front of the house. And then we've got a little retaining likewise on the north side at the driveway. Again, we got kind of a cross slope on this lot and, you know, we did that both just to get a handle on said slope and also, you know, tame the elevation over at the garage facade. Lyle, if you could open up our drawings, issue five, design development. Or I guess jump back to. Yes, if you wanna maybe scroll down to, I think, the fourth or so page, to A201, so we can look at the elevation. There we are. Yeah, so we can see that there's a slope that kind of falls right to left. And then we can see the retaining wall in the front left that it was primarily done by request of the Historic Zoning. And it also, it also does exist on the existing home, so we're, we're just trying to maintain, I think, the grade relation that's kind of been there for quite a while. And I say existing home, it's, it's a home that either is going to or has already been demolished. But, but just in far, as far as respect to grade, we're just trying to maintain. See, I think I went over the primary materials, painted brick to main house, hardy siding, half-round gutters at the main house. Primarily a grand manner, composition shingle. Cast stone headers at the arched windows upstairs. Columns and whatnot will be of a cementitious rot-resistant material. And I guess for quantifying the, the Italianate style. Hip roofs, deeper cornice, the use of decorative corbels. A little more substantial at the main house, a little more subdued at the porch. We've got a a prioritizing of detail at the, at the side structures where we've got crown mold over the window heads at the, the immediate secondary structures. And then as we work around the back of the house, get a little more informal, start to introduce some, some one-by head casing at the, the rear elevation. Actually, it looks like we may have just gone ahead and carried that crown mold all the way around. I think that's, I think that's what we've got.
Preston, I'll jump in here. This is Bunny. Can we go back to the front elevation, please, Lyle? Just immediately what I'm gonna say is a concern that I have is there's just a whole lot going on here. There are so many different styles of windows, double columns. I mean, it just, it seems to me a lot of parts.
Lyle, if you would please open the precedents images. There you go. Yeah, the Italianate style, I think lends itself to, in most of these images, a mix of elliptical segmented arches, flat tops, more pronounced headers. We've got double windows and corbels at, at porches on a of these images. Maybe Lyle, if you'll go down to the next page or two, couple pages down. So we did reference historic images, you know. Bottom left image has the double columns. Image on the next page, at the top of the page also features double columns. Most of them have additional corbels. So I, I think, I hope that'll maybe dispel a little of the concern there. I was frankly a little concerned. It was too plain, but just to let, let you know that's where we're headed.
Can you go back to that front facade, please? Wow. That front door and then the French doors to the left and right with the transoms and the windows on the far side do not look Italianate to me. And then possibly the windows above it. But then the mix of the clapboard, I'm just trying to think of instances when I've seen Italianate with clapboard.
Yes, my question.
Chime in for that.
This is Gaven Duke. Question for you about the two side wings. There, there are no, no rooms above those, correct?
Correct.
And I guess the thing I'm having issues with, the scale and proportion of the top of those windows to where the, the soffit is, I guess. Seems like a lot, where you got the note, hardy siding, exposure, four-inch exposure. I was thinking we went, Lyle, did we go to five-inch exposure minimum or?
Yeah, I believe we did.
Yeah, so I think that's one thing that makes it look busy, but I thought we had five-inch exposure and that, that space above there just, I guess I'm wondering why you need that extra space. I mean, it would seem.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There are minor closets and or bathrooms tucked within those hip roofs. So there, there is some two-story space, but it's not.
Yeah, there's two bedroom closets tucked underneath the eaves with the roof line on the second floor.
We could, for looking for solutions, raise the window head heights. We could add transoms. We could also increase the detail there at the, the entavature, that, the cornice could be further emphasized and certainly broader exposure at the, the hardy siding.
Yeah, it just, to me, seems like your front porch, you've got a scale there. And then the two wings, the soffits go above that or the fascias go above that level. So it seems like you would have some banding to separate that. And, you know, I don't even know if you need, you know, dormers above or it just seems like, scale-wise, it needs something to, because your Italianate example is really beautiful where the main body of the house is dominant. But it seems like these two wings are starting to sail above the first level of the, of the porch. Does that make sense, Preston?
It does. Yes, sir.
Hey Preston, this is Ron Ferris. What, where I begin to lose, the, the front elevation, the composition and study of the massing, I would concur with Gaven's comment and some of Bunny's. I mean, the, the general central massing to me accomplishes the Italianate scale and proportion. Go back and forth on scale and size of porch. I don't think I'm gonna split hairs on that. The, the front door seems to be more classical in nature than Italianate. You know, that's maybe a little bit of setting. I lose my massing and my appreciation to the massing as I turn to either side in the back. What we have at the front is a, is a nice game of symmetry and balance. I could agree with Gaven on working with those two side wings as a proportional setting. But I'd start to lose it on the sides and the back. It just gets complicated to me. I think we've been on this fireplace component before. It seems to be a broad mass of something that Gaven commented on last time, just never got comfortable with that. I lose my, my appreciation for your good scaling composition or you started at the front at the back. And one material note is, this is for Lyle. Lyle, do, do we allow cast stone? I don't think we do.
No.
Okay. So just looking through the rotations and materials, I'm not sure cast stone's gonna be acceptable as, though I like the detail, it would need to be limestone.
Certainly do that.
That study of, this is Gaven. I was wondering if, you know, if you all explored shutters as well, because that would help on that massing of the two wings somewhat.
We hadn't, but I'm, I'm certain the Gongs would be open to that.
Because the left side elevation is pretty, pretty broad as far as coming down that street. When you get down Royal Oaks and you'll see this body of the house above. And then however you all are gonna sort of do the study for that, the two wings. And then you're gonna see this massive sort of, you know, edge on that wing coming at you. So anything you can do to diminish that? I think we did that on the last house. I think you did put shutters on some of those.
Yes, or added a, a closed set of shutters. We could do the same thing here. Would that be okay?
Again, the, you know, the hardy plank being the correct sizes probably. And Lyle, is that fireplace? I know we talked about it last time and I can't remember. If it's on a porch, is it different than if it's on a house?
Ron, help me remember the rules at three and 10, 10 and three, as far as the, the exit of the flue away from the pierced roof.
Exit of the flue has to be three feet above any horizontal proximity of 10 feet. That makes sense.
I was thinking next to your fireplace could only be 16 feet though.
No, I believe it can be a feet above the penetration. And I would consider the penetration here, that roof of the porch right there. And I'm assuming that's no more than 12 feet. For a standalone fireplace on a porch that does not have a roof is what you may be referencing.
Well, that scales right at 16 feet. We'll just, we'll double check and make sure that that's, so.
I think also Preston, the, you know, once you get, I think you have it on, is that a garage extension that shows a seven-inch exposure of the hardy plank? On that back.
It is.
And then the other ones are showing four, but, you know, I get, I guess if you were thinking seven inch, that might help with the little bit of the scale and maybe at that second story and first story split, if there was sort of some type of fascia banding there to kind of break up that long, you know, long view vertically.
Certainly do that.
Can we go back to the front elevation again? Why, I, I'm curious, Preston, as if, if this is Italianate, why the two wings are designed like they are? What are you, do you have any examples of that?
Well, they're, they're just, at least in my mind, just additive forms, you know, a way to expand the footprint without just pumping air into the main house. And one of the comments that we had received back when this was the Bass residence was that it was just, it was massive and just imposing. And it, it was, it was massive and imposing because those secondary elements were full two-story. So you're just a balancing act between lowering and defining them as sort of secondary additive elements, you know, versus, you know, leaving those up at two stories and having just a, a massive home, which preliminary feedbacks that nobody wanted.
Yeah, we appreciate that you, you know, that, that you're addressing that. That's great. It just, I think you need. It just, I think you need, I just think they clash. I just think that the center of the house does not go with the wings. I'm saying the exposure from the top of the window on the siding is a concern too, as Gavin was saying. And then we even have a different kind of window over to the right. But I just think that those wings just do not match the center portion of the house. And as I've said, and now Ron has repeated, the front door really doesn't is not Italianate and doesn't match. And I would argue that the, I guess those are French doors out to the right of the front door, that they also do not match. I mean, I just feel like that it's, it's too, it's not a defined style, which is something that we we want as a defined style, but it's true to the description, architectural description. And I feel like we just, we have that it just doesn't, it's it's clashing to me. I guess is the word that I'm, that keeps coming to my mind.
Sure. Would, if we were to take those immediate secondary forms, if we were to do those in the painted brick as well and add a bit of fascia banding, would that, you guys think that would help?
Even the roof lines and all of that, I think, I think it would be easier to fix it by not trying to be Italianate on the center of the house. I think it would almost be easier as Gavin was suggesting to raise the window heights on the left, maybe clean up the windows on the second floor. Just the, in that, the way the roof is over the front porch, the standing seam, it looks like a metal roof. It just, that just, it just doesn't. You know, I just, and the corbels, I mean, I'm not getting that.
Can we go back to your, can we go back to your inspirational for a second? You had some inspirational images that you presented and we definitely don't want to, you know, that's as far as we want to make sure that we're getting into the.
See, are there no wings or sides to any of these that are like that? And there's just, there aren't a mix of windows. It's pretty much the same style window in all of those.
I would, there, there's a wing on image eight, bottom right. And on that same image, the front porch does appear to have a low sloping metal roof. As does, you know, the image number one, image number.
Yeah, I don't know that those are sloping roofs. Those look like flat roofs to me. And then see on the one you just circled, the red, do you see how secondary that is on how much lower that roof line, which is something that Gavin was addressing earlier too, just the way that that lines up with the the first floor of the other, of the main part of the house. Ron and Gavin, feel free to hop in here.
But I would wonder, you know, I don't know, Preston, I know budget's always an issue, but if y'all were to do the two wings in the brick and then figure out some kind of decorative element over the windows, that could be, you know, it could be a blank panel recessed brick, something in this Italian style, if that's what you're after. You know, it it can be small square, you know, windows of some type that are kind of, you know, representation. Trying to see there's some above that one image that that shows the square windows in that middle part, lower on that page, 218. See some of those windows that are above, well, yes, yeah. It's down one, Lyle, on there. See the the lower houses there, there's some windows on that second, you know, maybe some way to borrow some architectural idea from that.
Yeah, I think so. Do a inset.
I kind of wonder if instead of doing the hardy plaque on the front of the house, you know, if it weren't too bad to, you said the house is all painted brick.
At the main center portion, yes.
Okay. And and what would it take to do the two wings in something like that?
I think that would be easy enough.
I mean, it seems like it'd be more cohesive to what, and then Ron and Bunny and, you know, and Mal, I don't know what you all think, but it seems like it would be more in character with that type house.
Yeah, I agree that the hardy plank, to me, does not lend anything to the Italianate style.
That's Jeanette.
Can y'all see or hear me? I've got a bad wifi here.
And you, you don't have the window, you have, you know, particularly looking at the side of the house too. These Italianate houses just don't have a great deal of variation in the windows and there, there are many different windows. If you look at the front and the sides of your plan, they're just, it's, well, still, you know, anyway.
They're, one of, I think, the distinguishing characteristics of of the Italianate is a variety of windows, specifically floor to floor. A lot of these on the main level are square and then up are are arched or.
That would be two style windows then, but in none of these examples do I see that many different types of windows. And they're usually single windows too.
Well, we can, we can certainly.
Preston, you know, the one thing that helps on some of these, you know, you get those two wings with the the big space between the up over the window and the fascia. On this page, 219, you can see that they've used the brickwork on that lower sort of right hand corner photo to kind of do some banding to break that, that long space up in between there. So maybe something that you could do to kind of break that up. And the photo above that, they've done something with the banding on that as well to kind of give it a little more of a you know, a division between that long gap between the top of the window.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think they'd be open to that.
Yeah, Preston, I think you, this is Ron Ferris. I think you said something on the front end that was insightful to the challenge of the style itself. And you, you said you worried that you had taken a lot of what was Italianate off of this house. I mean, if you look at the pictures that are on the screen now, there's a, historically in Italianate styles, they became layered over time and got rather complicated. It's a certainly a style that requires, you know, a certain kind of taste. I'm not criticizing the style. But what I don't see is the editing of what you've done in the windows to be along in the lines of the simplification you did with the style itself. I'm not asking you to take the style to what we're seeing on the complication, what we're seeing on the images. I think that'd be rather challenging and maybe a bit much just of all the pieces and parts. I think it's a game of of editing your windows and your doors. For example, the French doors right and left the front door. As I do a dive into just composition, I don't see a lot of that in the Italianate style. Though I can find examples of your front door. It generally, it's more often times of a sink, big single door, be it stained or wood. I think maybe it's a game of editing, continuing to edit what you did with the overall sense of style and how you're presenting the pieces and parts. And then I say again, on the back elevation, most of those windows have a language together, or they seem to be speaking a similar language. It does lose it some about the kitchen window and the windows left of that kitchen window, but just that composition to me. Perplexed why that's main center mass isn't centered in the composition along with the porch. Maybe some of it's being driven by plan, but.
Some of it's driven by plan, some of it, you know, roof lines trying to hold the back of the house beneath the front of the house, just those sorts of tail chasing exercises.
Yeah. To me, I think it's, it's going to be a study of just some editing and simplification of massing and very with Gavin on some of his discussions about cornice lines and stuff.
And on that note, I'm you can sort of see both in the neighborhood context, images that are a whole lot of super high style swaps. I was a little concerned about presenting something that was too ornate. So maybe I dialed it back a bit too far with the siding and certainly we can.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I know the challenge that you presented with in the Italianate style. It's, it's how elaborate does it get as well as how expensive does it get? And I think you're editing of what you've done as a style component may be good. It's just again, continue to edit the massing and the composition. The image that's on the screen right now, to me, is the one that I'm the most troubled by is everything that's, as I work my way from the left. I'm seeing multiple roof lines on the left side and that main mass and then the off center porch. That's the one that's the most I struggle with as a composition study.
Sure.
Respectful of the challenge before you for sure, but that's the one I'm the most troubled with.
Yeah, Lyle, if you could pan down just a little bit so we could see the left side elevation, I'm sorry. And the other way. Yeah, so I think that, so there's our left side elevation. We've got the the main house beyond the secondary forms. And then, you know, I made the decision to to break down the garage base even further. I I thought I was doing everybody a favor by reducing things a little further. But, you know, surely we can, we can raise and align things a little bit. So you can see the the double garage and then the single is is sort of most broken down and I think real elevation looks, looks maybe busier than it is. And but I don't disagree that we could do some things to make a little more consistent.
What are the ceiling heights for those second floor den and bedroom?
10 feet. Yeah, 10 feet. So that's, it's basically 10 and 10.
Help your composition any if they went to, you know, like nine or?
I don't think it helps if the second floor goes to nine. I think in the closets, the the little bits that we do have tucked under the the hip roofs are, I think, fairly fairly minimal as drawn. They may be even shorter than what is a nine. Yeah, so the walk-in closets have eight foot ceiling height. So we were, I was doing my best to break those down, but yeah, you can see that the closet's kind of left and right that take advantage of the little, little roof space.
Yeah, those don't concern me as much as the, like this den in the bedroom where where you're looking at the side view.
Yeah.
And the the roof line is is just as high as the main body of the house.
I got you. I got you. Sorry.
Open, hoping to maybe think about, you know, if you drop that roof line down somewhat, it might help that not feel like the back is as prominent as the front.
It does. And given our limitations on six and 12 and starting to get, you know, with lower pitch roofs and all those numbers that add up, I kept that the den and the rear guest bedroom, I kept that a little higher to stay above. Maybe if Lyle could go to the left side elevation. A little bit, yeah. So toward the back there, the rear facing element stayed aligned with the main house in order to stay above the element below, which stayed above the element below. So we're again, sort of trying to maintain our allowable roof pitches, trying to keep from, you know, one form just running on to another. So is a little bit of trying to define the forms, yet stay within the guidelines and the overall massing. Would would raising the center portion, what what's currently brick, the main house, would raising that a little bit help to alleviate? And we, we kept it low, but we've got a little room to play with there in our allowable height.
Yeah, I think if it's allowable, I think you could get a little more space over the second floor windows between that and the the fascia. It seems like that's really close right there to me.
That may allow the offset that that was concerning on the rear. If we were to raise the the main house a little bit, lower the rear.
Yeah, you've got a little bit of room. And I see your 40 foot allowable height. I think just a little bit there would help you in that division.
Is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak for or against this proposal? Board members, do we have any more questions, comments for, for Preston? If not, let's close the public portion of this and have a discussion.
Well, I think we've given the applicant's representative a lot of feedback. I think it's, it's a, it's going to need to be studied and developed from our comments. I'm prepared to make a motion to defer, but anybody got other discussion points?
Do we have a second?
I would second that.
All in favor of deferment, please say aha. And for the record, Jeanette is with us now.
I am with you. I I'm just going in and out with my wifi.
All right.
Think we need to do the vote by roll call. Mr. Chairman on the further, further.
Okay. Bunny Blackberry?
Aye.
Jeanette Woodson?
Aye.
Gavin Duke?
Aye.
Ron Ferris?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Wonder if we could surmise the request just for the, just for the minutes. Could we do that? We can just go through the minutes and pull it out. Just trying to make it easy for next time.
Lyle, could I, could I run back through my list of things as I understand them? I mean, that would help.
Sure.
Okay. I have in my notes that we were going to change the siding pattern where we're leaving them siding to seven inches for a little more consistency. We're going to change the immediate secondary forms to painted brick for more consistency with the main house. Add fascia banding above the windows, perhaps inset ornamentation between the cornice and set fascia banding. We're going to study adding shutters, specifically a closed shutter on the left side elevation to lessen the exposed facade. Study raising the main box of the house to within allowable limits in order to present a greater variation between it and the additive form on the rear elevation. And generally take a pass at windows for more consistency and study alternates for the French doors at the main house.
And also I think there was concern over the massing of the two wings in relation to the front of the house. And we're going to look into the secondary usages above the first floor to see if that massing could be lowered at all.
Indoor, some element added to make it not seem as great a distance from the top of the window to the fascia.
And I'd add the the massing and composition study of the rear elevation was on my list.
Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the second item under new business is the application for certificate of appropriate for Chad in Dale Callendine. For Chickering Lane for the partial demolition of existing home, which is property of and construct a new addition of 35%. Whoever is representing, if you would unmute yourself, you are up.
Yes, this is Neil McLaughlin with Besta Homes. You gonna be all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe if you want to start with the, do you have the, do you have the current exterior pic?
The actual picture itself?
Yes, sir.
Actually have a picture, I have a drawing.
Okay, that's all right. So the proposed, I guess I was wanting to start with the existing, which would be R 2.0 and the drawings. That way we can look at what is currently there.
Okay, I've got C 2.0 pulled up, is that what you're wanting?
I believe it was R 2.0.
R?
It's in architectural drawings, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I've got it, go ahead.
Okay. So existing there is currently to the left side, a one-bedroom and one-bath apartment with, with a garage behind it, where you, you currently enter in through the, the portico chair. The driveway goes up into kind of a courtyard in the rear. And we are looking to take down that existing garage and apartment, leaving what you can see on the far left, the greenhouse. We're actually going to leave that and attach that to the new building, which will be a three, which will be a three-bedroom with a kitchen, full kitchen, two baths. Constructed out of, well, we're, you know, we're matching the existing Georgian-style elevation of the house. So you can see the, the, maybe on A 2.1 will be the proposed. Matching elements of the handrail, exterior handrail. We're going to reclaim the brick and stone from the garage that we are, that we will demo and, and do our best to, the goal is to reuse that on the, at least the front elevation of the, of the new building, or as much of the front of it as we can. And then on the right side of the home, we'll be adding a, a garage with an upper deck that comes off of the upstairs master bedroom. The windows in the home are currently Marvin Integrity, which we'll be using on the additions as well. So that will match, like I said, hopefully the brick and stone we can utilize to reuse on the front elevation of the new, new building as well. And then, maybe if you want to go back to that C where the, I guess it shows the, the civil, where we can see the, the driveway that we're adding. And then we're adding a porch on the left of the, a pretty good-sized porch to the left of the new construction.
What sheet are we talking about? What sheet are we talking?
I'm sorry. I believe you can really see it best on the civil set.
Lyle, sorry, you're, this is Bunny, but I've just lost all the screen. So I'm going to sign back out and sign back in.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'm on the civil set. What, what sheet?
Maybe scroll down one more, maybe one more, you can see the, where it calls for the permeable, yes, that one.
Okay.
So all the, all the concrete will be a permeable concrete. And so any, any cement that we are adding will be, will be permeable. And then the, the driveway there to the new garage will also be a permeable material just for stormwater purposes, to capture the rainwater. We will be adding a, a retaining wall to the back of that garage for grade purposes and to get the water, kind of correct an issue that's currently existing with the water coming back towards the house on the right side. So that would help with that as well.
It's more of a stormwater issue than really to this commission.
Got you. Just wanted to point out what the material was on there. But if you want to go back to the exterior elevation, if you don't mind, on the, on the plans, you'll see that we are keeping in accordance with what's there. It's the exact same style, like I said, same, reusing the brick that's on the existing garage. Matching windows.
Is, this is Jeanette Woodson. Is the roof height of the addition the same height as the roof height of the, of the house? The existing house?
It, it is, it is close. I can't, I can't verify if it is the same. I am.
It, it looks like, I, I'm just zooming it in. There's no, I don't see any heights called out, but it looks like it is the same or slightly above the original, the original roof line of the house, not, not the chimney.
Sure, I would say because we're using the portico chair as a, as a, it's, it's an entry from the house to the addition. So I would say that it's pretty close to being the top. I'm, I'm not the architect, but I would not say that it, it doesn't appear to be going over the height. But I would say it is close.
What are the existing balustrade on the house made of?
Wood.
So you're going to use wood balustrade throughout? It says railings and balusters to match existing.
Yes, we're either, I mean, I'm, I'm suspecting that they'll have to be a custom-made out of wood.
Okay, just, just double checking, I don't know, Lyle, was that in the materials guideline? Where they have a materials list?
Yes, it says the railing columns are wood. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I just make, I didn't, I was looking for the other materials too.
I think, this is Jeanette Woodson again, just initially, I have a little bit of an issue with how large, how tall the building is to the left, on the other side of the portico chair, that it matches the same height as the existing house. On the right side, where you've got the porch and the balustrade, that, you know, it steps down and, and there's always a desire to have the existing historic house have a more prominent sitting on the property. So is there a reason why that is so tall to the left that that's? It doesn't look like.
Two bedrooms.
And what's the ceiling height in those bedrooms over there?
They are. We've got them called out at eight foot four and a half in order to match the existing.
Okay, and then you have, and then you have the roof pitches are, are similar. So that's, I guess, how you're getting to that height there.
Yeah.
Yeah, nine, 12 roof pitch.
Yeah, it just seems like there's no windows or no, there's a lot of distance between the bay below and the top of the, sort of the fascia or the cornice of the garage. There's just a lot of room there that's facing, that faces the main street, right?
Yes.
Then your, your connector seems like it could be, I mean, that, that connector doesn't have any, I mean, architectural character as far as, you do have balustrades on the portico chair, but I think it connects just so that we meet the stipulation of detached structure. So seems like that, that's a hallway, I guess.
It is a hallway. And two, it's got two sort of a bookcase and a closet as well.
But on the back side, you have, you have windows though, right?
Yeah, there's a dormer back there. I mean, there's.
Yeah, it seems like it would be more interesting if there was some, you know, way to acknowledge the street from the front side, because it seems like it's a, it seems like a little bit of a hospital connector as opposed to being something that's above portico chair. It seems like if they were arched or some way that there was some passage that, you know, complimented the architecture of the house, because the architecture of the house is pretty nice. And then what you all have done with the bay windows, but this connector doesn't really have a lot of, a lot of character that complements the house. And then the, the space above the bay and seems like even if you did something with some recessed brick panels that just broke that up or somehow banding, I think architecturally needs to be studied a little more. Just, it seems a little too tall. I agree with Jeanette on that.
I'm the homeowner, can I interject anything?
Sure.
True. Because in, in my discussions with Carrie Stringer, who designed this, first of all, the reason we're doing it is my 90-year-old grandmother needs to move in with me. And so that's, that's the whole purpose of all of this. And so that, in talking about that portico that, that now has, is going to have a second floor to connect to the house, because I need to be able to, because of the grade in front of that, that driveway. And she needs to be able to get out on the same as the first floor, you know? So I still need to keep that portico to be able to get her out of the car there. And so in talking about what to do with the front there, we were just trying to do something that kind of visually went well with the balcony that's on the front porch. Just to kind of give it some good flow. And then that room, it's, it's a hallway, but it's kind of more of like a library with, you know, some closets and bookcases and stuff. So if we, you know, our backyard is beautiful and our courtyard is beautiful. And so I, I chose to put the windows there so that we could have, you know, a sofa or office, you know, desk or something for reading and overlook our, our beautiful backyard. But if we put windows on both sides, there'd be no place for furniture. So that makes, does that make sense?
It does. Is that a pitched, in that passageway that you walk through, is that a pitched, pitched ceiling in there? It would have to be to, there's an eye, there's an eyebrow. Yeah, it's vaulted. I just can't read the small print on there.
It says.
Okay, it's vaulted. And I can't read that either. That is, it's painted horizontal siding across that.
Neil, is it, okay, it, it matches, it's going to match, because the house is not brick all the way anyway. It's got, yeah, in the back and so.
Yeah, so it's matching that.
Okay, okay.
Staying on the front elevation, Lyle, this is Ron Ferris. And I appreciate the insight from the homeowner. I'm, I'm going to echo Gavin's concerns about the, in general, I can greatly appreciate the existing structure itself. It's quite pure and historically, you know, accurate from what I can see. The, the pieces and parts on the left addition, I also appreciate that they've taken cues from the main house and developed those, in particular, the bay window. I'm troubled by the lack of that blank wall above that bay. I hear the furniture, but I'm going to, I'm going to get my precedence to the exterior perspective from our study. And the lack of, understanding for the, for the crosswalk, I'm not opposed to it. I think it needs to be coordinated to a little bit stronger level of, of architectural style to the existing house. Moving to the right on the addition, I, that's where I struggle the most. That is a large, flat roof, then it has a component that's put on top of it that is just sort of perched on top of it. You go to the roof plan or whatever, you'll sort of get the sense of it. I'm struggling with, with that component more than anything. I'm not sure how to resolve it or how to even tackle it, but that, that element in itself, big, large, flat roof and then something less than a third of its sales setting, third of its size setting on top of it's given me problems just from a three-dimensional and, and balance to the overall, what is a great front elevation on this house? That's, if anybody's, has a similar reaction to it. I like, again, and appreciate the bay that's on it and stuff and how they're trying to break down the, the scale and, and composition of the other parts of the main house. But I struggle with that piece on top of it. And then the, the big blank elevation on the back side, right there, that's just a large, blank, brick wall. Maybe there's nothing to view out of that, but compositionally, I'm struggling with that.
Actually, that backs up to a hill, I don't believe any neighbors could ever see that.
Backs up to, I lost you, Lyle.
Dale, could you?
You're correct, nobody can see that. We have woods between us and the property behind us. And the, the bottom portion of that is actually, well, is actually, well, I guess you can kind of see it there underground, you know? So it kind of just backs up to a hill with trees that are probably 20 feet from it.
This is one of the larger estate lots over on Chickering. I don't think anyone will ever see that.
Okay.
If, on that portico, if we just flipped it and put the windows, if I could talk to Carrie and see if we can just flip it and put the
it, put the windows on the other side, would that, would that, I mean, I would lose the view from that room, but would that work?
Can, can we go back to the front elevation again? I guess, I guess for me, yeah, it would, it would seem like that, and then would you ever entertain the idea of, you know, that it's asymmetric on your balustrade, so you've got, on the right-hand side, less than you have on the left. I would wonder, would you ever entertain the idea of bringing the siding on down on both of those areas where the balustrade is, and maybe even just have an opening, in better lack of, better word, a window, just to kind of make, it seems like this floating...
A bridge.
There, there's a floating aspect to this connector, and it just feels like it needs to have some feet. And if that space where I think there's a drawn a human kind of standing there, if that, if that could connect, and even if you just had a round opening or something there, that would, that would help me, even without the window above, it would help me to kind of anchor that connector to the earth. It just seems like it's floating.
I hear you, but I'm a little confused about what you're asking to do there, about anything rounding, because I don't see anything else kind of rounding on the rest of the architecture of the house, so I'm not clear with what you're asking, I'm sorry. This is not my field, I was a teacher, so I don't know.
It could even be a square opening, I'm just looking at other historical examples of that. Sometimes you would see an elliptical opening, or you could see a square opening. And Lyle, I don't know if you can draw where the area I'm talking about?
Talking about where this person is, or up here?
I think he's, I think he's saying that the connector, the connector between the two is so long and skinny up in the top, and there's nothing that brings its mass to the ground, so instead of all of it being see-through underneath, maybe the portico share is see-through, but there is the massing, there's a wall where that person is standing.
Yeah, it comes over to that first column possibly with siding.
And then the, there's a window, so you can see through there.
Yeah, it doesn't even have to be a window, it could just be an opening in the wall, basically, or, or you could just connect the wall and just have siding that, that connects it to the building.
Um, at this point, I need to move her in, so I'm open to any suggestions. I personally don't like the look of that. I like how open it is there, and welcoming, and doesn't close in, and make the entrances, you know, feel claustrophobic, because the door is right there to go into it, you know, but, you know...
I guess my...
I'm willing to compromise, just because I need to get this taken care of for her, you know, so, you, you know.
Um, this is Bunny, and I have a comment on it, and I do have a few things, and I've been having some technical issues here, and I can barely see this now, so forgive me if these comments have been made. First of all, it's a beautiful home, and it's a, it's a very classic home, and...
Thank you.
I think that, and along with that comes a great responsibility to maintain that. My, my concern in looking at this is I think that this addition on the left, we'll start there, is way overwhelming to the house. I think in height, it's overwhelming. I think that the distance from the windows to the roof line is too great. I think that I did hear Gavin's comments about the portico share, it's gonna be, it's gonna look like it's just a, if you don't do something to address that, it's kind of floating there. I think even with the furniture arrangement, you need some windows on there, that's just too much unbroken, blank siding. And then if we can move over to the right side, please, Gavin, I mean, Lyle. Um, the size of, it appears to me that, again, this does, it's overwhelming. The, that looks like a very big porch up there, and historically, that just wouldn't be the case, the balcony that is out there, and then the way that the house is set back, back and in, I guess that probably goes, is that an open porch? I'm just trying to even figure out what that...
Well, if you look at the roof plan, there's a small cover that is covering it, but it goes up into a much larger porch space, yes. And Ron, Ron did bring that up.
Okay.
And the, it will not all be, the only part that's used as like a porch space is the part that's covered, the rest of it is not.
But you can see it, that's what I'm saying, it's, it really wouldn't be accurate. It wouldn't be something that would have been done like that. It just, the scale of that is, I guess, has given me pause, too. So, those are my comments. And I'm sorry, y'all may have said all of those already, and I just couldn't hear you.
This is within compliance of all the flat roof requirements?
Is that a question for Lyle?
Um, you know, I think that...
Big enough lot?
Well, that'd be considered a terrace and not a flat roof.
No, it's over the garage?
Yeah, and it's a, it's a sizable lot.
And there is an existing, you know, connector there, that basically we're mimicking with this portico share. So that, that's kind of where the inspiration for that came from, it's just matching what is existing currently. We're adding the second floor to it.
That's correct. It, the, the first floor of it exists with a roof on it exactly as it is, as it shows in that picture. It exists now. We're just adding that second part.
Lyle, are there, is there an existing picture of this that you can bring up?
You mean a photograph? Are there any photographs of the, of their, of the house as it is?
Did you all submit photographs of the house?
Yes.
You did?
He did, yeah. But I'm here, I can go out front and...
Where, I don't see them. Are they...
Yeah, we had some problem, we had some problems with them. I sent them to you, you said you got them via, I think it was like a Google, Google Drive invite.
All right, who would they, who would they have come from? I'll pull them up.
Vesta Homes.
Hey, Lyle, click, click on the rendering that's under, right there. What, my first, that's what I clicked on first when I opened the applicant's submission, and would ask other board members to react, but that rendering, to me, starts to represent, begins to address some of the exact things that we're talking about. The element on the wall is scaled down from the main body, though it still doesn't have windows, and then the piece on the right seems to be more congruent to the house, as a broad study. So I'm not sure why that was turned in, but when I saw that, and then started clicking through the drawings, is where I was losing the success of that piece on the right, and the hard drawings, and the scale and proportion of the piece on the left.
So what is, what is the rendering?
Probably a title sheet, I'm not sure.
Uh, that was something that someone, I think a friend of one of the kids drew up, from the plan. Other than just the inspirational type drawing, that's all it really was.
Um, Lyle, this is Bunny, and I'm so sorry, but I've lost the shared screen again, so once again, I'm gonna go all the way out, you may have to invite me back in, okay?
Okay.
All righty.
Is there anyone else in attendance who'd like to speak for or against this proposal?
Do y'all need me to go out front and show you the house? Would that help, since we're having trouble with the fun in the pictures we submitted?
Or how you would get it to us, though? Are you trying to email it?
Well, I mean, I'm just on my iPad on Zoom, I could just go live, show you the house, if you need me to do that. You know, just walk out front and use my camera.
Hey, Lyle, this is Bunny, will you please invite me back in? It's not letting me get in back in. I've got the audio, I can hear y'all.
Uh, best thing to do is go to the website and click on that link.
Okay, I'll try again.
And I'm sorry, my computer is acting up as far as trying to find these photos. Came from Beth?
No, Vesta, V-E-S-T-A.
Vesta, okay.
Homes, yeah.
Vesta.
I think the picture would do us some justice in that, from the street, and I don't know if, how much weight this holds, but from the street, it doesn't, you know, it's a good ways off. So you barely see the left side currently. The garage, the greenhouse, none of that is really visible from Tickering. And the left, the right side, where the garage would be, I mean, it would, it would only be visible once pulled in for the most part, but...
I've got two pictures here, and that's all I have.
Okay, that's the neighbor.
It's the neighbor, yeah.
That's the other neighbor.
We had trouble with this file, I've got notation, these pictures are not transferring to the Google Drive. Did you, in a different way, other than...
No, it, I know at one point, it was confirmed that you got them, but you don't have the one of the house.
It's a JPEG, too.
Do you have one that you could email real quick?
Hold on, I may, I may be able to, sorry, Peters, here we go, here we go. Everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay.
Beautiful house.
Thank you, we love it. And we are trying very hard to maintain its character.
Wow, is anyone to zoom in on that portico share?
You're asking a lot of me, Gabe.
Well, I think, like, I can zoom in on my phone, I'm, I'm seeing it in here.
Y'all, if y'all could see what I'm looking at, it's like a one-inch square is all I can get on my computer.
I know.
That's the best I can do, right there.
Okay.
It's showing up big on my iPad, but...
I'm having terrible computer issues.
Um...
I guess that's my concern, is it's a one-story portico share, and it makes sense with the roof that's on it. But when you get it way up there with that connector, I think it needs to have some way to read as a connector structure, as opposed to just a, you know, an aerial gangway, sort of, or a way to get over to that new building.
Yeah, that's gonna be really high up, it's gonna be...
Yeah, it's gonna be...
It's gonna be parallel to the upper floor windows.
Yeah, well, the joists will be above the first floor windows, so it's gonna be pretty far up in the air, and that's where my concern is with, you know, its character, because you're gonna, it will be visible.
And there does look like there's a pretty big elevation change from the, where the house sits, down to where the greenhouse is, and that, but that's not really shown on the plans. It looks like the greenhouse is raised back up. Do you see, I don't know that the plan is accurately reflecting that, I mean, I do see that there's, that they've got a stone veneer to, it, it says to raise, to raise it up to be level with the, I don't know, I just have an issue with that, that, you know, if there are a way to...
Actually, Jeanette, the greenhouse is sitting at about six thirty-one, and the portico share is like six twenty-nine.
Is it down, okay, so that just may be the picture I'm looking at, makes it look lower.
Yeah, it's level. The, the conservatory is level, or greenhouse, whatever you call it, is level with the...
With where the portico share is now?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, there may be inches difference, just, you know what I mean, but not, nothing major, no, it's, you don't step down into it or anything, just walk straight into it, so, okay.
See, see...
I was just trying to figure out a way to lower this secondary building, so that it doesn't, it's not just so big right up next to the house, with such a long connector at the top.
What is the first floor of that, that building's, what's the ceiling height in there?
Neil, you'll have to answer that, I don't have it in front of me, but isn't it like nine feet?
Yeah, the first floor, I believe, is nine feet, I mean...
I'm showing, I'm showing nine-six, I think, if it's the right one. Yeah, so if you look on, eight, three point one, you got nine-six, and then you got a joist system, and then the top floor is eight foot four and a half?
I believe that's right.
Correct.
Okay. So you're, you're matching the existing, it looks like you're tying into the existing floor system.
Correct.
Okay.
Wow, is this headed to the variance board as well?
I do not believe it will.
With the garage and the retaining walls on the right side, I'm going to the civil site plan and the site walls that are required for that garage.
I'm gonna leave, let me go back to the...
Yeah, you got, you got a nine-foot wall there. You're right, Ron, six thirty-nine against the back of that wall, and it's six thirty at the garage entrance, so that would be a nine-foot wall.
That's on the civil stud?
Uh, C four point oh, and there's a blow-up of it there as well.
You know, I mean, technically, I guess it should, but I've always looked at this as retain, and not decorative, and I kind of, I'd differentiate the two, you know, if it's a decorative wall, I have a problem with it. If it's serving a purpose, retaining, I don't have a problem with it. If this were the foundation of a home, this would not be going to the board, so, I mean, technically, I guess it, it should go.
There's already a wall, too, all along the back there, that, you know, existing, to a certain point even out there, where the new garage is gonna go.
So, wow, this will go before stormwater there, too, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. What is this in the back, this big thing at the back of the property line? Is that a, it's not a bocce court, is it?
It could be. It, the right is, the right is a sport court, and the left is a flat area that I've actually thought that should be a bocce court.
Easy, Gavin.
And you're welcome to come play on it. It's a cool house, real cool property.
Guys, do you think, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
I mean, it sounds like we have some pretty good concerns that need to be addressed with this, so I, I'm thinking we need to defer this.
Was it?
Well, I think, I think... Well, I think, I think, I, I'm listening to the applicant and her reasons for doing this, you know, do matter to me, so I want to make sure that we're giving her something very clear to go back to the architect with in order to get this resolved.
Okay, I think that we can probably come up pretty quickly with the list for.
Well, let's talk through that, and then, you know, let's talk through that. So, I guess what I've, the two major components that I've seen, or three, are that the height of the left addition is not subservient to the main house, and therefore the massing is problematic for us, that the connector does, you know, needs maybe something more decorative or something to make it carry down to the ground, not be so long. And on the right side, the garage element is, the massing of how wide that is, is problematic with the, and especially with this small roof cover over the roof that just looks out of place on a balcony that big.
Can I ask a question about that? So it's a two-car garage, you know, and basically we put in, like, pretty much exactly what we can put in, so like, there's not much of a way to shrink a garage, you know, you've got to be able to pull a car into it. And so what would, do you have a suggestion, or, you know, do you understand what I'm saying? Like, I can't.
No, exactly, exactly. That's why I'm bringing up the three issues and do a suggestion to, you know, make that something you can work with.
Well, I'll jump in. I think the strength of this house, and especially the picture even further supported it, is that it's got great, simple detailing about its front porch and the window fenestrations and all the composition. And I think somebody said it, that a flat roof portion, I'm not opposed to. And this one's close to being appropriately done, but the, that, that setting of the porch and on top of that flat roof, any historical precedence for something like that? It seems out of place. I'm not trying to be in any way overt about it, but all the members are voicing that. I don't know if it goes away, or if there's.
That's what I meant, yeah. Should I just take it off, because I can't.
I think if you just served it with a roof.
It may be, if you needed it, may be able to be addressed with a little bit more roof or something that its, its scale starts to be complementary to the scale of the garage below. I'm in no way indicating that you need to shrink the garage. Garage has got to be functional, completely agree with that.
Right.
Okay.
The balustrade, I'll speak strictly from some firsthand experience, the balustrade and the multiple components that you got there, if you go to your front porch on this house, which is a solid component balustrade up high, I think there's some complimentary design that you can do with those multiple pickets, even at the portico shade cover, little piece, and the ball, multiple balustrade that you have around the side. I think it's, please don't misinterpret that we're asking you to modify your planning and what's working inside. It's this quick study of the outside. I love the front porch on this house. If there's either way to complement the garage balustrade with what's done on the main body front porch and on the, the guest house, guest, that, that bay on the left side of the portico shade. I'm taking my cues from the house, from the front of the existing house, which is stunningly simple and beautiful, and I'm, I'm after the, the two additions having that success, and I think we're close.
I would think that, that on the left side, one way to solve that might be to bring that in, in your illustrative detail you had with the, the sort of watercolor study. It seemed like the roof line, or the, the actual top of this thing, if it came down to match the, the sort of the cornice of the connector, I don't know, Lyle, if you can draw that across there where the, where the gutter line of the connector, if it, if it came down just that much, and I'm just, from my opinion, it feels like it would be more in scale with diminishing from the main body of the house. And then, if we could figure out some way with your architect to sort of let this, this connector portico shade land down to the ground, it seems a little bit floating, and it's going to be really tall.
I think also, one thing that, I'm curious if the, how accurate it is, because the photo that we saw, the greenhouse felt very, did not feel nearly as big as it is looking on, on, if it's staying where it is, as it is, I just, I don't know if the lines are actually accurate on the left.
Well, the elevation to the street, I mean, it's probably 20 feet, 20 feet down, so that picture is taken from the street. It's not, whereas the plans are looking as if you were level. That's where the discrepancy comes from.
But it, it lines up on your civil, your, your spot grades for the finished floor of the house and the spot grade for the greenhouse match what this drawing shows?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, guys, so I'll say it again. I make a motion to defer based on what we've.
We, have we, Mal, have we closed the public portion of this? Out here? Wow, did we lose Mal?
No, sorry, I was. Yes, we can close the public portion. So, board, what, what is, what's your opinion?
I think it's got great potential. I think it needs to be brought back to show what, you know, after the architect sort of makes the, takes these comments and gets it, you know, revised and brought back to us, but I think we've given good feedback.
Yeah, and I would, I would say that the, wherever the little colored drawing came from, that encompasses just about everything I've heard all y'all, all you folks talking about. It's, it's more balanced, it's more uniform. Some work around the portico share, but that drawing is probably a nicer-looking product than the, the elevation, the front elevation of the house, just one man's opinion. So, do we have enough definitions for the, for the owner to to make corrections?
I think we do. Move for a deferral and ask the applicant to resubmit based on the comments regarding the addition on the left and the addition on the right. I think we bullet listed those earlier. We can do it again.
Do we have second?
I'll second, yeah.
We'll do a roll call. Ron?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Mal? Who'd I forget? Gavin?
Aye.
All right.
Is that a deferral of 60 days?
And with, but she can come back earlier than the 60 days?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, number three, the application for certificate of appropriateness for Delphine Damon. 1019 Chancery Lane for the demolition of garage and to construct in addition to existing home property conservation more than 35%. Charlie Rankin or whoever's representing, if you would unmute yourself, you are up, and please call out what thumbnail you'd like to see.
Yeah, thanks, Lyle. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Charlie Rankin, the architect. Here to represent Allen and Delphine Damon, 1019 Chancery, and Lyle, if you want to just maybe start with the site plan on the first page of the architectural drawings, that's a survey. Yeah, there you go. So the client's, so this is a 1964 colonial revival-style house. As Lyle mentioned, it's before you as a property worthy of conservation. The clients are seeking to renovate a portion of the existing house and place an addition to the north end of the house. To accomplish the addition, we are proposing to demo the existing one-story garage. And, Lyle, if you could pull up the site photos under that reference file image, page two, you can see, next page, you can see the existing two-car garage that we would be proposing to demo, demolish. The intent of the project is to expand and renovate the kitchen, add a new screen porch, add a master bedroom on the main floor level. Currently, there's no, there's no bedroom on the main floor. Create an improved laundry room, add an elevator, and just generally clean up what is somewhat of a choppy floor plan layout on both the first and second floor levels. The property is a bit unique in that the main entry to the house is located on the back of the house relative to Chancery Lane. So the elevation that you see from the road is actually, you know, quote unquote, the back of the house. Our design seeks to place a new screen porch and the new main level master bedroom on the east side of the house facing Chancery, where the homeowners can enjoy the really beautiful view they have across, across their front, front lawn there as creek cuts through it back towards, back towards Chancery Lane. So in an effort to be sensitive to the scale of the house, existing house, and, Lyle, it may be helpful to just flip back to the elevations, proposed elevations on A 2.2, A 2.2 might probably be the best page, the Chancery facing elevation. Drawing one there on A 2.2, there you go. So in an effort to be sensitive to the scale of the existing house, the eaves of the proposed addition are set to align to the eaves of the existing main body of the house. So you can see on the existing, there's sort of two roof levels. There's sort of the main body of the house that has a higher roof level, slightly more ornate eve detail with some corbling, and, and then there's a lower portion there you see to the right that includes a couple of bedrooms, existing bedrooms that are upstairs right now. So the intent is that the proposed addition sort of mirrors and matches the main level of the house. Eaves align. It's our intention to match the eve detail to that main portion of the house. And the proposed ridge line of the new addition is in line with the ridge height of the existing house, so we're not going any taller than the existing house. And then so that, that smaller roof, the shorter roof, then sort of serves as a visual connector to, between what, what sort of becomes the two main wings of the, of the house. Let's see, the existing lower roof, oh, sorry, the screen porch then is a low-sloped roof, again, oriented towards Chancery to take advantage of their, of their view, their best views there. The low slope allows us to keep the second floor windows in place. And then, obviously, kind of accent it with a Chippendale railing style around the, around the perimeter of the porch there. As for material selections, the homeowners have done a good bit of research already and worked with a brick consultant, looking to try to find a good match. We've looked at, you know, even Old Carolina and some handmade brick options, and really, I just found that there's not going to be a really good way to match both the color variation and the texture of the existing brick. So we tried to work hard with the design to disguise a little bit that transition from our proposed addition back to the original. So to accomplish that, we proposed a lap siding, would use Hardy's Artisan Series, which would allow us to do a mitered corner. And we've also created two-story millwork bays on both the front and the back. This is to break up the mass of that front-facing gable and also add just some architectural interest to that street-facing facade. The brick base around the proposed addition serves to establish an appropriate visual base to the proposed structure. And we plan to use as much of the brick as we can salvage from whatever demolition happens to the garage and, you know, slowly start to mix in either a new or a reclaimed brick that we can find, you know, as, as close a match as possible. So the design meets the footprint and FAR allowances. There is an existing non-conformity on the south end of the house, which, you know, referencing back to that site plan is highlighted in orange. And we've adjusted our setbacks to account for zoning ordinance 218-5 that limits the overall width of the house to the width of the building envelope. So what I call our effective side setbacks are highlighted in red there, and you can see we're staying within, with our setbacks and within our FAR and within our footprint allowances. So really, we're just before you to, you know, seek your approval for the design of the proposed addition.
Hi, this is Delphine Damon. I do have some, Tara Armstead has just finished a big redesign of the front, and we're in kind of phase three, the front of the house, meaning the front door. We're kind of in phase three of the new landscaping out towards the street, because the detra pictures of the front, which are what much, pretty, I'm happy to share my screen.
Go ahead, you can share your screen.
I think she's muted, though, Lyle.
Well, she's going to have to unmute herself. I can't do it.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we see it now.
Okay, so, let's see if I can. I'm going to have to, so Tara has done this new parking area. There was no parking previously. So now you can see this, and the hope is that the addition is kind of hidden to your left, so it doesn't take away from the main house.
Well, this is Jeanette Whitson. Hi, I want to say that I'm very familiar with this house. And, I mean, it is a beautiful historic structure and is going to be extremely unusual in Belmead in that you drive to the, around to the back of the house to approach it. So the pictures that Delphine is showing now is the actual back of the house, which no one will see. So the picture with the screen porch and the terracing, that's the view from Chickering, and I just want to say, I think that's an incredibly thoughtful job that was done on this new addition that was put there, because this is going to have a different view from the street than almost any other house is going to. It's, the elevation is very high, you're sitting way up above on the other side of a creek, and how, you know, the beautiful detailing of the railings and the massing, I think, does fix what, what was a problem inside. I think, does fix what, what was a problem inside, um, with no, no downstairs ba- bedroom and a, a very dated kitchen, but preserving of some garage to be in. So those are my initial thoughts of it and appreciate the fact that you bought it, a historic house and are trying your best to modernize it so that it doesn't, um, stray too, you know, far from its original roots.
We, we love it. Um, and I have some views of the back, if any of you all want to see what is actually the view from Chickering, but the view from Chickering, as you know, Jeanette, is being closed up, where the garden is, is being changed, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Um, would you all like to see the back of the, the, the part that faces Chickering?
I think that's helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be a help.
Okay. Here, sorry. Okay, can you see this view?
Yes.
So this is the old porch. Charlie, feel free to, that area where the windows are right there, there's an old maid's room down on that basement level. So that's where the screened in porch is going. And I think there's another view. And we are going to protect that beach with my life. I'm obsessed with that beech tree. So, and we're opening up this garden some because it's gotten closed in and it doesn't feel great when you come up the driveway, so we're swinging the boxwoods out, actually.
So it's basically taking the right side of the house, which is, which is really the back of the house.
Yeah.
The right side here, which is a very plain facade, um, and putting the new addition on, which has some very pretty detailing and windows that I do think really enhance the view of the back of this house.
So Delphine, I'm gonna show, you leave that picture there, I'm gonna show, if I can, what it's look, gonna look like.
Okay.
See that?
Yeah. I, yes.
And Charlie tried to pick up, you know, the window detail on the old part of the house on this new part and we. I love what Charlie did, yeah. And we're reusing the old wrought iron, there's a very beautiful piece right there on that one section of porch.
I'm gonna give it back to you, okay?
Well, I, I'm happy to help, however, Charlie knows a lot more than I do.
I think those updated pictures are very helpful, Delphine. I know you, you know, have been doing a lot of work in the, in the yard and the garden over the past few months, so good to have some updated images.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think what you all done is, is a great, um, sort of mending so it looks seamless with the history of it. I, I guess my one question is gonna be like the size of the lap siding, I couldn't find that, Charlie, I know it looks good, but is it in the materials list as far as the size of the lap and the mitered lap siding?
Yeah, I noted a six inch reveal.
Six inch, okay, so it's, it's, that's good.
I think I heard from an earlier, uh, presentation, um, y'all would prefer a seven inch reveal. I don't know that I have a strong feeling on that, I, I generally default to either a six or a seven, um, depending on.
I don't have a strong feeling.
My other question is on that, um, elevation from possibly the garage view. That was, um, I don't know if we can get to that. That view from the garage, I know not a lot of people probably gonna see that, but that like lap siding, is there a historic example with two stories of lap that you, or is there any way that we could, you know, break that up or do you think that's a historic detail that you'd like to?
You know, I think shutters will help, which we are gonna probably mimic the shutters from the rest of the house.
Okay.
I went, I talked to so many brick people, um, because the brick on this house is kind of brown. You know, it's not, we used Old Carolina for that parking area and they tried to make it match the house, but, I mean, it's fine for the parking area, but it would look terrible if it was up next to what we have.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, I think the shutters would help in this elevation for me. It just seems that there is a lot of siding and it'd be nice to, to break that just slightly.
And, you know, this will be landscaped, those kind of straggly hollies that are covering our garage right now are gonna come out. And, you know, we will, I mean, I love trees, so this will have a very natural style of landscaping put with it, um, to hopefully, you know, tame that corner towards the bedroom on the left, the far left.
Very commendable design, Charlie, I think I, it fits well with what you have and what you tied in to everything for me.
Mal, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Now, are we ready to close the public portion of the discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, do we, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd make a motion to, uh, to approve it.
And make, yeah, I would second that.
Okay. Jeanette?
Yes.
Bunny?
Aye.
Um, Ron?
Aye.
Gaven?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Nice job, Charlie.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Wow.
Thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Any other business for the board? If not, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion, I saw motion, Jeanette.
Second.
Second. Second, Gaven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yes.